Four for administrative classified and two for administrative certified personnel.
So moved.
Second.
I don't think you should be able to have to do that because you're on there as a retiree.
Yes, sir, I am. In like two and a half years.
And it's a little out in the future, but by the same token.
You might reconsider, right?
Doubtful. Sorry.
Alrighty, we have a motion and we have a second. Roll call vote if there's no further questions.
Member Beduris.
Yes.
Member Campbell.
Yes.
Member Felice.
Yes.
Member Peril.
Yes.
Secretary Sikora.
Yes.
Vice President Hanson.
Yes.
President Quigley.
Yes.
My second action report this evening is thirteen point two, resolution number fifteen thirty-seven. We're seeking your approval to authorize the dismissal of educational support personnel employee for reasons other than reduction in force.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Member Beduris.
Yes.
Member Campbell.
Yes.
Member Felice.
Yes.
Member Peril.
Yes.
Secretary Sikora.
Yes.
Vice President Hanson.
Yes.
President Quigley.
Yes. Aesop.
Yes, my final, Aesop.
Is it going to be a fable that goes along with this?
No, it's not, hopefully. Action report thirteen point three. We brought this information report to you at the last board meeting, November sixteenth. We need to replace our current teacher attendance and substitute calling system due to subfighter being bought out by Aesop. So we're recommending the board's approval to purchase the new teacher attendance substitute calling system, Aesop by Frontline Technologies. And just as a reminder, the cost for that is annually nineteen thousand two eighty-six.
Motion?
So moved. Second.
Who made the motion?
Krista.
Oh, I'm sorry. Talking about bad news. We have motion and second. Any discussion? No fables from Aesop? A little disappointed. Roll call vote please.
Member Beduris.
Yes.
Member Campbell.
Yes.
Member Felice.
Yes.
Member Peril.
Yes.
Secretary Sikora.
Yes.
Vice President Hanson.
Yes.
President Quigley.
Yes. Next up, information reports, the Valley View report card. Ms. Kinder will be presenting on behalf of Dr. Mitchum, who is not in attendance this evening.
Yes, sir.
She might be doing it anyway.
Most likely. I'd have lots of backup then, though. Good evening. Tonight, I am going to share a brief overview of our district report card. This is released on an annual basis per federal and state regulations. District report cards are released, as well as school report cards. And this 2015 report card was just recently released last week. So there are a variety of indicators that are displayed to the public on our school report card. And the report cards are available in their entirety at illinoreportcard.com. That's illinoreportcard.com. And the updated school report card that the state puts out is intended to provide a fuller picture of how schools are performing beyond just academic data. So my primary focus this evening will be on the academic data because that, of course, is why we're here, having an impact on our students and their learning. But I will do a brief overview of some of the other indicators that are present on the report card, just so you are aware. Some of the topics that we're displaying here, these are indicators on the report card that have been previous discussions in board meetings or in other meetings. So just in terms of expenditures, how we are allocating our budget, as Gary was just speaking to, we spend more on instruction as a percentage of our budget than the state average. Teacher retention has been a topic that we have discussed previously, and we're just slightly above the state average there. And our teachers are highly credentialed. Compared to districts that are comparable to us, seventy-one point seven have master's degrees compared with other districts of comparable size and status that of fifty-seven point five. When it comes to salaries, our average teacher salary is approximately thirty-five hundred dollars less than the average. Now, keep in mind, this doesn't compare pay scales because there's the other variable of how long teachers have been employed or how long veteran teachers might stay in districts. But that is a comparison to where we stand to the state. And our average administrator salary is just about fifteen thousand eight hundred below the state average. Some other indicators that are displayed on the report card at a district and school level where applicable are our graduation rates. At our five-year graduation rate, we're comparable to the state. The four-year graduation rate, we fall short. And so that's definitely an area where I won't go into detail tonight, but that is something that's high on our radar, as is our chronic truancy rate. So the freshman on track rate, slightly above state average, but chronic truancy fourteen point six compared to eight point seven. So this is a factor that we are aware of as a district and that we are targeting to address through a variety of supports. Because, of course, if our students aren't here and in school, it's going to be very difficult for them to learn and very difficult for our teachers to do their jobs. Our attendance rate, slightly below. Again, mobility is a factor that we continue to deal with in our district. And mobility refers to the number of times that a student enrolls or leaves school during a given school year. So we're at fourteen point one percent compared with the state average of eight point seven. So again, this does present challenges. And when we look at our data, we know that these populations of chronic truant or mobile students who are mobile, new, transfer and transition, need additional support in addition to just, you know, learning the academics or filling any gaps that may exist. Average class size, we're pretty much on par with the state average as well. So moving into the academic results overview and the school report card, the primary focus is PARC, the Partnership for the Assessment of Readiness for College and Careers, which are students in grades three through eight, as well as our high school students who are enrolled in English one and Algebra one. Those are our level one, those are our freshman level courses. Any students who's enrolled in those courses take that exam. The dynamic learning maps is taken by our students with their most significant disabilities, and that's approximately one percent of our population, in students' grades three through eight and eleven. And then ACT, which you probably are familiar with, is also taken by our junior-level students. So in addition to that, we have included in the report at the end as an addendum some additional information on access, which is a measure of English language proficiency that our English language learners take. So not only do they take the PARC assessment, they're also taking an assessment that measures their development in all of the domains of acquiring the English language. So as I mentioned, I know the board and the community have heard the term PARC many times. And we've visited with the board previously. It has been primarily on the getting ready to administer PARC. It was a huge shift for us as a district. It was a huge shift for us as a building. It was a huge shift for us as a classroom teacher and as a student. It was a big change for everyone. And I'm very pleased to say that in terms of this monumentous shift for our district, all of those players, from our students to our teachers to our building administrators and our district administrators, did a phenomenal job in ensuring that we tested all of our students and it went off without any major hitches. So we're grateful for that. So now, what does this information tell us? That's really what we're looking at now. It's important to note, this was a new assessment this past school year, and it will be given again this school year with some changes, of course. But it is a unique assessment design. And because of this, in terms of how it is different, it limits our ability to compare to previous state results. So we can't look backwards and say, how does this compare to last year or the year prior? It is computer-based. The old ISAT and PSAE was not the case. We spread it out over two testing windows, and the results were then combined into one overall score. Previous state testing was scored on four levels with academic warning, below, meets and exceeds. With PARC, we're on five levels now. And the big change here was that the level three was implemented to show, identify and show us which students were close and approaching mastery if they quite have not met that college and career readiness benchmark. So it's really important to say and stress, and I'll probably say this multiple times, that this is our first year of data with PARC, and so it is establishing a new baseline. We don't have that prior year data to compare. We have some other data that we've compared from surrounding districts, but of course, this is just the first year, and we use this data in conjunction with what we have. This is a more rigorous assessment than what we've seen in previous state testing. It's more truly aligned to the expectations that are set at that college and career readiness level. And so across the state, fewer students are meeting these new proficiency benchmarks for meets and exceeds. But with any new assessment and with any new expectations changing, we will see that this starts to solidify and become our new norm, and I'm sure that we're going to see increases follow. I mentioned previously that the PARC assessment is going to continue to evolve. So this year, it will be administered in one window instead of two, and there will be fewer test sections and reduce time for test completion. So I'll likely be standing up here next year telling you that there were some shifts made in the scoring and that we have to carefully look how one year compares to another because we don't yet know what that's going to look like. I mentioned the five levels. The levels that I'll be referring to when I talk about meets and exceeds are level four and level five. And then our students who are just below that are at level three, and that means they're approaching the expectations. Important to note for parents, that shortly after break, you will receive an individual report, student report sent home, that has particular information about your student's performance and breaks it down in the domains of mathematics and ELA, and then even further so that you have an idea of how they're performing in each of those areas. Again, this is a baseline, and you should take this as a one piece of the puzzle when seeing how your child is growing and performing in their education. When we received our PARC data, our data and assessment department, led by Michael Lacasio, took a close look at what is this data, how does this data compare to what we see with our other internal assessments? And in simple terms, what we saw was there was a pretty high level of predictive reliability, about eighty-one percent, that if a student was meeting our district benchmark for college and career readiness that we had defined using our MAP assessment, the measures of academic progress, that they had a high likelihood of being at the level of meets or exceeds level four or five on PARC. So what, this isn't an official linking study, but what this tells us is that we have tools in the district that we're using and have been using previous years that are closely aligned to what PARC is assessing. So that's a good thing because we can use that programmatically to monitor our progress and ensure that our expectations, that bar that we're setting, is at an appropriate level. So as a district as a whole, and this includes our grades three all the way up to the high schoolers, we are continuing to sustain improvements in comparison to the state average. So in this comparison here, it's thirty-one point six compared to thirty-two point nine as the state overall average, and this is ELA, which stands for English Language Arts and Math Combined. So the important thing that I want to note is that we are continuing to kind of close that gap. And certainly, this is not our target. The state average is not our target. I just want to be clear about that. We want to far exceed the state average. So to say that we're closing the gap on the state average, to me, that signifies that we're moving in the right direction and growth as a result of the hard work that all of our teachers and all of our leaders and support staff are putting in. But we still have a ways to go because we want more than a third of our students to be fully college and career ready. So this first graph that is represented in all the colors here is just to give you a quick scan of how we measured up compared to the state average across all the levels. And so what you'll see here, blue represents areas where we are above the state average by more than two percent. Green represents we are above within two percent, but we were above the state average. Near, below, within two percent, so just slightly below. And then the pink color represents below two percent or more. So what I would really encourage anyone who's listening or viewing this graph right now is to, please don't, you know, make any snap judgments based on this one legend. What we're showing you here, and we'll dive a little bit deeper and look at grade levels, is that as a district as a whole, where do we stand? And so there are celebrations in this data across the board, and there's some important things to note, however, that we look at this data programmatically and as a system. And so when I look at this data, the first thing that I say is, what as a system are we not doing to set our teachers up for success at certain grade levels? And we've been having a lot of conversations about that as a district for quite some time now. We have had that conversation in academic committee, and we've had that conversation with a lot of teachers and groups of teachers who are doing some grassroots pilots to address some of the issues that they have with this massive overload of being at the elementary level and grades three, four, or five. With the tremendous shifts and changes that have come to our teachers, there has been a great deal of change for them in terms of curriculum, assessments, and all of the additional mandates that have come down and that they've been navigating. So I'm going to go into this a little bit more in detail, but our teachers and our leaders are very active in seeking out ways that we can address some system issues, and I'll speak specifically to what that is, as well as how we as a district are addressing some of the curriculum and instruction and assessment things that are in progress. So when you look at this chart, what you don't see is our primary level data, our grades K through two data, because they don't take the PARC. If you recall, we put a lot of our focus shifting it down to primary level, so they're not represented here. And so that's one important factor that I would also like to point out. And then in addition, what you don't see are changes that we've been working on that are in progress. So I know you may have some familiarity based on previous reports to the board about a math pilot that we were engaging in at the elementary level in grades three, four, or five. Well, that was Eureka math, and last year, we had several classrooms, probably about a fourth of our classrooms piloting that. Well, and that was at third grade. So if you take a little peek there at that yellow color, that's letting you see that those third-grade classrooms that were piloting Eureka, we believe, had a strong influence on raising that average of third grade as a whole. And so that's just one example, and that's in motion, where all classrooms now are doing that this year, that we are in progress with.
Can I ask you one quick question?
Absolutely.
What grade are our kids in that started all-day kindergarten?
So those kids are not yet in this data. They are our current third graders this year. Okay? So they will be shown in this data next year.
They're not reported.
They're not reported.
So this data does not reflect that all-day kindergarten?
It does not, no. Our first cohort of all-day kindergarteners are current third graders. This data that you're looking at is from last year, 2015. So this is actually a year old. In the future, the state's hope is that we would get this data with more expediency. So you would be hearing this at the end of the school year, not in the winter of the following. But because it was a new test, there was all of those issues to work out. But that's a great point of clarification. So this is a view of our grade levels, grades three, four, and five, and how we compare to the state average in English Language Arts. And here is a comparison of our math data for grades three, four, and five. So I mentioned previously some system adjustments that despite how effective or impactful you are as a teacher, these things work against you in terms of time provided for professional learning and collaboration, which, when it comes to professional development, our elementary teachers have had a massive amount of that with all of the changes we've had with curriculum and new report cards. However, the time that we have that's outside of the school day or protected time is very limited, and it's limited when we compare what they have to middle and high school. Middle and high school has early release. Elementary does not. And so we get one hour of banked professional development a month for them, in addition to their grade level meetings and what we are able to offer them during the school day. We're also talking a lot, and we've talked about these things in academic committee that's chaired by Secretary Debbie Sikora and Member Diane Peril, about the structure for instructional minutes, block scheduling, so we could allow teachers to have collaboration within the day and as well as have that focused instructional time. And then the teacher focus on specific core areas. So we have a lot of teachers who have, through their own grassroots efforts, talked about departmentalizing, meaning, I'm a fifth-grade teacher, I would focus on the areas of math and science, and my partner teacher would focus on the areas of literacy and humanities, social studies. And so what this does is allow me to get more effective and more, and focus more on that particular area, as opposed to you expecting me to be a jack-of-all-trades and just get really good in everything and, you know, plan and prep at this high level. We have new social studies standards coming. We have new science standards coming with the next gen. And so when we're talking about middle and high, we're talking about teachers who have a focused area. They may teach more than one course or more than one prep. However, they can really focus their intention on what do these standards mean? What are the expectations for our students, and how do I support those deeply in my classroom when my kids have such wide, varied needs? So that is an important thing that we have a lot of teachers exploring. Academic committee had a conversation about this last month. And we have a lot of teachers who are having some positive results and positive feedback from that. So we don't know what will come of this yet as a district as a whole, but we're committed to ensuring that we address some of these system issues that are going to set them up for success and not just keep piling more on them and expect them to be great at everything because we really want them to be able to focus and be as effective as possible. I mentioned some programmatic things. You will see our all-day kindergarten students in our next year's PARC data, but we, of course, are monitoring them with our internal assessments. We had a shift in supports for our primary students with the foundational focus, so building those foundational skills in that earliest stage. And then we have a lot of efforts in terms of curricular refinement. So we've been doing curricular changes for a long time, but in terms of deeply supporting the curricular shifts with materials that do what we need them to do and really are at an appropriate level of rigor and really are close to assessing what we know needs to be in place with the common core. We have had a standards-based transition in progress with our new report card with standards-based, continuing to move up our levels. And our common assessments, we are working diligently to strengthen those at a district level so that when I'm assessing my students as a fourth-grade teacher, for example, I have a true picture of where they are in relation to the standard, and it isn't giving me kind of a false read because it's at a comparable expectation of what we see on the state testing. And then, of course, continued professional development and support, focusing on those things that we know are most impactful, and then ensuring that we follow through to see how exactly they are impacting our students. In looking at our middle and high grades compared to the state, we have the breakdown comparison here for grades six, seven, eight, and then our high school, of how we fare against the state average. And for math, we see our grades six, seven, and eight, and our high school for how we fare against the state average. So what we're seeing in these two slides here is kind of a reverse trend where we're starting to see that our middle and high grades are starting to exceed the state average. And again, we only have our internal assessments to compare this to in this one data point, but what we are seeing now is the results of a lot of the curricular changes that have really solidified through the efforts of our teachers and that implementation and the development and implementation, and our leaders. And then the development of a lot of work to have resources that are going to support these shifts. And it's really been a team effort that's been a long time in progress, but now we're starting to see that similar changes to what we're doing with elementary, but we're just starting to see those come through at this point now. So definitely continued focus on these areas and the implementation of our core curriculum and academic supports and ensuring that we have that assessment system, which was, it was a shock to our system to start having internal assessments that had the level that we wanted them to be. But what that has shown us then is when our kids are asked to perform on PARC, they are able to do that at a much higher level than would, were they if we did not have assessments that were aligned. And we are also continuing our professional development efforts, focusing on high-impact practices, but also focusing on teachers providing clarity to their students so that they can engage in their learning and take ownership of their learning. And so what we're seeing here is a continued emphasis on these key areas for our grades six, twelve. ACT is another measure for our high school students. This is given to eleventh graders. Again, this is our last year's data. This is how we fare as a district overall. So again, we're closing in on that state average and closing in on the ACT benchmarks that ACT states that we need to be at to have our students be ready for college and careers and have success in credit-bearing courses when they go on to post-secondary schooling. The most important thing that I want to point out here, though, is the growth that we're seeing from 2014 to 2015. And in 2014 to 2015, at the state as a whole, we saw decreases, sometimes slight, sometimes slightly more, across the board in all the areas. But what we're seeing in Valley View is that we're continuing to maintain that momentum and taking some strides forward and showing that on the ACT. So in spite of the state trend, we are going against that and continuing to gain in those areas. And to me, that is very promising, and that is, again, a sign of the hard work of our teachers and all of our leaders who are contributing to this to ensure that our students are as prepared as any of their counterparts when they step foot out of high school and go on to that next phase and being truly college and career ready. I want to share with you about some upcoming assessments. We'll be giving PARC this spring. The window begins in March, and that's, again, for all of our elementary, middle, and high schools. Our DLM, which that data is attached to this presentation, for the sake of time today, I won't be able to go into that specifically today, but we'll be happy to answer any questions and go into that more deeply. In April, we'll be giving the ACT to our juniors. But I do want to note that the state has made the decision to transition from the ACT to the SAT. And so we'll be discussing this more as the year progresses, and so that will be another transition for us. But we will navigate it with poise as we do all of our teachers and our leaders and our district staff.
How much funding do we get from the state?
Well, if there was a budget for that.
We just don't know.
Yeah. Right now, the district is funding the ACT this year for our students because it is so critical for our kids who are caught in the middle now where they don't even have the PARC. They need something to be able to go and apply to college. So we're funding it as a district. If the state funding comes through, we will then get that. But when we switch over to SAT, if it is a state-mandated assessment, there should be state funding for it. So we will see. And then another new exciting change in the assessment front is there is a science assessment coming. We're told that it's coming this year. We don't have any other information yet, but it will be for our fifth, eighth, and high school students, and I believe that's 10th grade. And we don't know when or what, but it is intended to be an assessment that's more aligned to the next-generation science standards, which is another transition that we are making.
So the essential state pop quiz.
But they did that with ISAT also, did they? They did math, language arts, and then they started to include science at seventh-grade level.
They did. Mm-hmm. Yeah, there's, I think that's kind of been the trend, the trajectory. So the same thing with the switching over to the ACT. That is a change for us, but the ACT itself has a new ACT, or I'm sorry, SAT itself has a new version coming out this spring. So it will be a lot of transitions, but we're trying to make sense of this the best that we can. And I can tell you that we have, you couldn't find more dedicated teachers and support staff and administrators who are navigating these changes, sometimes unrealistic, sometimes just crazy, but they're navigating it, and our students are navigating it, and it's showing. And sometimes, it's difficult to make sense of that information, but that's what we're doing, and we have the support of a wonderful data and assessment department, led by Michael Lacasio, to help us do that, and a lot of our other district leaders who are helping lead this charge as well. There is additional information contained within. We'll be happy to offer follow-up, or I can take any questions now or ask any one of these individuals to come up and support me.
I think I would just like to, first of all, say thank you to all of the administration and all of your teachers who've done a great job to produce these results. Every single one of you have done a great job, and I know that all of us really do appreciate that, and I think it's kudos to you.
Thank you.
On the ACT stuff, the final with the green column, whatever, I mean, if you look at that, we're up a half a percent, we're up point two percent, we're up eight tenths of a percent, and we're up almost a half a percent again. Anything above that would almost be a statistical anomaly, wouldn't it? Especially with the ACT scores because of the way it's, if you had a one or two percent increase, the ACT would be looking at your school going, how did you accrue? I mean, that's how.
Well, the ACT is a small scale. Remember, it's the thirties. If you have a perfect score, it's a thirty-six.
Right.
So incremental changes like this, they don't look like much on paper, but they are.
And that's what I wanted, yeah, just I wanted to kind of point that out, that if you had a one percent increase, that's a substantial increase, particularly in one year. Now, is that last year's ACT? That's the, that's not the one that they just took?
No. This is 2014 to 2015.
Which is a test, it's a practice one, right?
Yes, that was a practice, and then they will take a school or district-administered one in April nineteenth, April nineteenth, yes. And so that- And so, that is...
By the way, some school districts do that test on a weekend. Some do it during the school year, during your school day. Different districts do it different ways. I don't know if it makes any better for a kid to have to get up at, you know... Try to get... I've got a 16-year-old. Try to get him out of bed on 8 o'clock on Saturday morning. So, we do it during the school day.
What used to be required by the state to do during the school day was required for graduation. Now, districts have that option, but we're committed to providing our students with that opportunity and we didn't want to take the chance that some would come and some wouldn't. And so, we think it's really critical for them at this point to have that opportunity.
Just little things that are out there. A lot of people don't understand.
Yeah, that's a great point.
So, fantastic job. I think, you know, the stuff we talked about with the kindergartners. We have, when we started the All-Day K, we have not seen those numbers yet. We hope that that... I hope to see that thing go, you know, jump up.
Absolutely.
And that was the goal. We saw that we had some shortfalls and we, as a district and as a community, we decided to try and fix them.
Absolutely.
So, hopefully, that will show numbers and we'll go from there.
Okay.
If anybody's got any other questions, I'm sure Rachel will be happy to talk to you ad infinitum about this stuff because I think she's very proud of the work that's been going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Let's see, as she gets herself reset. Special Education Extended School Report.
Yes, I have Information Report 14.2 on behalf of Erica Ekstrom, our Executive Director of Student Services. I'm presenting information prior to seeking approval on our Special Education Extended School Year Program, our ESY. We commonly refer to it as, for this upcoming summer. This is a typical offering that we offer every summer. It's for a limited population of our students who exhibit considerable regression of learned skills. And essentially, it has to be a part of their individualized education plan, or IEP. This upcoming summer, we will offer our Early Childhood Program at the Early Childhood Center. And our elementary program will be located at Hermanson. And ESY for middle school, high school, and step will be located at Bolingbrook High School. We intend to start the program, provided there are no emergency weather days, on June 8th, and it will run through July 6th. It will be a half-day program from 8:30 a.m. until noon, and it will run Monday through Friday. Our ESY is covered by the programming costs are covered by Medicaid funds and our classified and certified personnel are paid at their standard contractual rate. There is a breakdown of the estimated staffing needs, the budget, the anticipated costs that are associated with this. And we also receive reimbursement for the required transportation. If there's no questions, I'll be bringing this back for action at the next board meeting.
Anybody have any questions? Next, Investment Information Report.
You have before you a 2015 Investment Information Report as prepared by Joanne Borg, our Treasurer and Director of Accounting. We do this annually every year at this time outlining the various investment types and durations, primarily investment pools, the investment interest-bearing savings accounts, fixed-term investments with varying timeline horizons, as well as certificates of deposit, as well as municipal securities. You've got your commensurate yields for those investments, as well as the benchmarks and what those benchmarks are, and probably most importantly, the percentage of the portfolio in each of those investment types on the right-hand side. On the back is a matrix of the amount of money that's invested in both investments in cash as of September 30th. You can see there, back in 2009, our investments were yielding upwards of $3 million in interest earnings. This year, or last year, we were lucky to generate $180,000. That has two reasons primarily. The declining balances that we maintain, as well as, most importantly and most responsibly, is the really paltry investment yield that we get out in the markets.
The interest rates are really low.
We are very restricted in terms of what we put our investments in. Obviously, that's for safety first, liquidity second, and rate being the thing we chase last. We were getting a 0.92% yield on our investments back in '09. These last four, five years, we're lucky to get 30 basis points. Last year, we were at 28 basis points, 28... 0.28%. So, again, the news is not good, but we felt important to kind of show you in a real succinct fashion what kind of investments we're in, where that portfolio percentage is, and what it generates on an annual basis.
Thank you, Gary. Next up, Cell Tower.
Information Report. We have a cell tower installation request at Humphrey Middle School. Over the past three months, I, along with various personnel and our attorneys, have been in discussion with representatives from APC Towers. They've got representatives here this evening regarding installation of a cell tower at Humphrey Middle School. The request is for a 125-foot monopole to be located at the southeast corner of the school. And there's some renderings in the packet to show you what that might look like. While the lease particulars, the legalese, if you will, continue to be negotiated, we do have the financial terms, at least on a preview basis, with an option payment of $5,000 upon lease signing, rent payments totaling $2,500 per month with a 2% annual increase, and a revenue-sharing component that would add 20% of a $2,200 base monthly rent for any co-location of additional carriers. They did present this preliminarily to the Planning Commission with the Village of Bolingbrook, who had indicated at that time that they would... We would need to remove, or they would need to remove, the existing tower at Humphrey, which we own, and replace with the taller monopole. This would allow T-Mobile, who is their customer, if you will, and other tenants to co-locate on the tower and include a reserved spot for a Valley View's microwave dish at its current height of 100 feet. One of the conditions that the village had mandated that to receive zoning approval was to allow E-911 space on the tower for future use. And so, before we brought this forward, we just wanted to make sure we had any questions you might have answered. We have shared this information with Principal Lavery over at Humphrey, who's been part of the discussions from the get-go. And if we can make sure you're comfortable before we bring this forward for action in January.
What's the height of the current tower?
100 feet.
So, we're adding 25 feet and putting a bigger base on it?
It's a different tower. The tower we have...
Yeah, the bigger monopole, not the lattice work.
Correct. And the village, while they don't have an ordinance that restricts multiple towers on a parcel, the feeling there is that, you know, why junk up the skyline, if you will? And so, I don't necessarily disagree, especially if we're going to put a tower up. We can certainly make arrangements to have the second one removed.
They can hang more on this one, correct? You guys... You're good? Does anybody have any questions? I bought it. Okay. You're good. Thanks for coming. There'll be a quiz on this other stuff later.
If there are any questions that you have, you know, certainly after the meeting or any time leading up, please don't hesitate to reach out. We'd like to get those answered and make sure we can get all the legal requirements answered. John's been very good about raising issues that I certainly had not thought of. And so, we continue to work through those. I will say that APC has been very good to work with, very straightforward. And so, unlike the previous agreement that we had brought forward for the Jane Addams parcel where we felt like we were being pushed and all of a sudden they just said, "Oh, we're putting a hole in everything." I don't get the sense with this deal that that's going to occur.
And again, the village has to have, has a right of approval of this as well.
They will have final approval.
And one of the things that's in this, as I understand it, is that if for some reason they decide to, quote, "abandon the pole," we would have the pole so we can keep our stuff up there.
That's something that came out of our prior discussion when we were with the former carrier. And I think you raised it at that time, Steve. And so, that's something that we have discussed and made sure that we want to incorporate into the lease.
Plus, those two guys look pretty funny running down the street with that pole in their back. Give it a shot if you have to, right? Right, okay, yeah. Thank you. Well, we're not taking final action informationally?
No.
And you'll be returning next meeting with us?
January 11th, correct.
Okay. You guys will be here? Okay. We'll try to make it shorter for you.
That's what we're here for.
School construction bonds, Mr. Gazafi.
Yeah, we... I referred to qualified school construction bonds, or Q-Subs, as they're more aptly named, I guess, are low-to-no-interest bonds that school districts can obtain to finance building renovations, repairs, and construction. The State Board of Ed has received an allocation of $495 million in bonding authority to distribute among qualified applicants. We'll point out that the allocation was actually $1 billion, 505 million of which went straight to Chicago Public. And so, the rest of the state has to fight for the remaining half-billion. Districts must issue the bonds within 18 months of receipt of authority and 100% of the bond proceeds must be spent within three years of the date of issuance. Again, I want to be very clear. This is not grant money. This is not free money. The board would have to issue new debt. But what this does is it basically refunds any of the interest that would accrue with those bonds that were issued. And so, again, I think that's an important point to make. Permitted uses of the money. Rehab or repair of existing public school-owned facility. Application process. Districts must have, either go to referendum, certainly not something we're entertaining, or have additional debt capacity, which we do. And districts, I think, very first and foremost, must be ready to begin their project. A term they use is shovel-ready. Thus, we've brought you the Brooks Project. We brought you the roofs. And so, we feel that we're well-prepared to bring an application to you at the January 11th meeting. The application deadline is January 15th. This was a very swift program that became available. I sat in on two webinars and talked to our financial advisor. They're pretty excited about the idea that we can receive interest-free loans, if you will, or debt. The criteria, I think, again, we're well-poised. Highest concentration of low income, lowest available local resources per pupil, highest percentage of tax rate by district type. Being a unit district, ours would be 13.6. And lowest building capacity per student weighted by age of facilities. So, again, we'll complete an application. It's a relatively straightforward application and then wait for word to see if we're successful or not. The other point I think that's worth making is that we would incorporate the payment of any debt that we would take on from our operating funds. We're not going to be adding to that debt service levy that we talked about earlier. We're going to use operating budget to service any debt that we issue. Particularly with the idea that interest would be covered by this Q-Sub program, I feel that we can handle the service of any new debt from our operating reserves. And so, I think the best approach to that, again, working with our financial advisor, is to issue what's known as working cash bonds. They're issued a higher credit rating compared to some other options, such as debt certificates. They would require a backup levy on the file if the district, for whatever reason, didn't service its debt from operations. The county clerk would have the authority to extend the debt. But I like the idea that we're not adding to the debt profile, if you will, of our taxpayers, but are going to issue our services debt from operations.
Is this the equivalent of revolving loan fund that state uses for public waterworks projects?
This money, I'm not sure if this is going to answer your question.
They loan you a chunk upfront, you pay it back.
I'm not familiar with that program. This is the era money back in 2009, America Recovery and Reinvestment Act. I'm not sure why it's taken so long to become available. But again, it seems like quite a windfall.
Probably money that rolled off that wasn't expended.
Very well might be.
As you said, project-ready, shovel-ready projects.
I know there's a lot of interest statewide. I know the downstate districts are crying foul because a lot of them don't have additional debt service extension base, or DCEB. And so, they're basically saying is we are not going to be able to qualify for some of this, which certainly would be to our advantage. But again, there is some concern about it not being applicable statewide.
Well, if the state does a capital bill, which is always on the back, you know, of some people's minds, that might be someplace where there is other additional funding.
They'll look back to 2004 when we had our application approved back then, so.
Pay me now.
Anyway, if you're comfortable in moving forward, I certainly would like to have these applications completed and bring back to you on January 11th. I think this is an opportunity for us to take advantage of that will allow us to do some of the capital improvements that have piled up on us and do them in a way that we wouldn't have to add to our debt profile.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Next up, Legal Services Report.
The former report.
AFT Report. Valley View Council Report. Valley View Office Personnel Council Report. Thank you. Any old business before the board this evening? Any new business before the board this evening? Any questions from the public on actions we have taken this evening? Any announcements by the board from my left or my right? I want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Hopefully, we'll get some snow. Not a lot. If this rain with snow would be about three feet, so my weatherman 13-year-old son has told me. Again, I want to extend my condolences to Dr. Mitchum and his family. And it's always tough to lose a family member. It's awfully tough to lose a family member this time of the year. And that's all I have. Oh, also, I'm being pointed out, apparently on the news this evening, there was a, some kind of gun activity at Bloom High School in the southeast suburbs of Chicagoland. And... Or is it Bloom Trail, Bloom Township, Bloom something? One of the Bloom schools. But on the news last, at 6 o'clock, one of the channels, ABC, I believe it was. Is that correct? Had a picture of Bolingbrook High School from their stock footage. Is that correct, Larry? So, we didn't have any gun activity at Bolingbrook High School. Larry has contacted them and they are supposedly going to correct that for the 10 o'clock news, but just want to point that out. So, if anybody says anything, that's just one of those little things that, you know, next thing you know, you get 15 phone calls. So, there was no activity of any kind like that in our school district. Announcements by the administration. Announcements by the public. Motion to adjourn would be in order. Motion and second. All those who favor say aye. Pose the same sign. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Happy holidays, happy whatever you celebrate. Have a great evening. Oh, you left one out?